Welcome everybody to Beaver Creek's August 21st Board of Education Meeting. Please call the roll.
Dr. Fisher.
Here.
Mrs. Hunt.
Here.
Dr. Morrison.
Here.
Mrs. Regano.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor.
I'm here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion of second to prove the agenda is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Regano.
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt.
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
And we're at the presentations.
Yes, evening, we have four presentations and we're going to start off with Mr. Darren Schweederman as we recognize those individuals who contributed much to our district and we want to recognize for their retirement recognition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Otten, board members. Good to see you this evening. It's always a bittersweet moment when we have the opportunity to recognize those who have served our students and our schools so well and so faithfully over the years of service. Tonight, we have two recognitions. We're going to do them in alphabetical order and we'll get started. First, I'm going to take a moment and I will read a resolution. And the resolution is adopted when the board accepts the resignation for the purpose of retirement from any of our staff members. Tonight, we're going to recognize Mr. Chuck Zollers. Chuck is our systems network administrator for the school district. And then we're also recognizing Mrs. Teresa Lewis, licensed school nurse at Beaver Creek High School. And I'll start with the reading of the resolution and then we're going to invite them and their supervisors up for a few moments. As the meeting held by Beaver Creek Board of Education, the following resolution has been adopted. Whereas the Beaver Creek Board of Education has received a retirement notification of Mr. Chuck Zoller and Mrs. Teresa Lewis. Whereas the board wishes to publicly recognize and commend these two individuals for their outstanding contribution during their combined 34 years of dedicated service to Beaver Creek City Schools. And whereas through their efforts, the quality of support rendered to this district's students, staff, and administration and the performance of this school's mission has been greatly enhanced. And whereas Mr. Zoller and Ms. Lewis leave outstanding professional and personal records which will serve as exemplary models for all of us to follow. And whereas their presence, influence, and contribution help make our schools a better place. Therefore, be it resolved that the Beaver Creek Board of Education does hereby accept through grant the retirement recognition or retirement resignation of Teresa Lewis and Chuck Zoller and does publicly express to them their gratitude and sincere appreciation for their outstanding career in our schools. And we wish them both health, happiness, and a long, active, and deep retirement. At this time, I would like to invite Laura Bailey, principal of Eppidrick High School, and Teresa Lewis to come forward.
So this evening, I'm honored to celebrate Beaver Creek High School's licensed school nurse, Mrs. Teresa Lewis, after 18 years of service to Beaver Creek City Schools students and staff. Survived 18 years in a school clinic, was little walking apart, and is not for the same apart. Teresa, I'm sure you've lost count of the number of math test tummy aches and history and hand headaches you've treated over the years, the number of Band-Aids, ice packs, and hot blocks you've administered in the millions, the endless bottles of medicine, cups of grape juice, tears, and phone calls home without a reply. Making things you like to forget about completely. And I guess that you won't get another time to say, "Where's your pass?" Go back to class. And you take all these memories, and you can all get to stay out of your head. I appreciate your kind words as I've transitioned into a new role, and the staff and students of VHS are going to miss you. So not only do you have that, the students that you were appointed to post really want to know how much they love you and how much they appreciate everything you've done for them. So as you soon step into retirement, we know you'll be taking care of everyone around you still, but on behalf of VHS, thank you for your time, dedication, and the love you've shared with all of us. Congratulations.
And looking around this room, I'm looking at the Board of Education. I have taken care of many of your children throughout the years too. So it's a big family affair, basically. I've been privileged to get to know the kids and the parents. And I've been a nurse for over 45 years and I wish I had gone into school nursing earlier than I did. It's only been 18 years plus several years of something. Wouldn't you wish them all together made me another year of service? I worked at hospitals for a long time and when I had my children, I decided I was going to stay home with them. I worked part-time at the hospital and when my kids got to the schools, I thought, "I need to do something. I want to help out." And so I volunteered in the clinic at Main Elementary. And Dottie Cammerer, love trip that woman, she encouraged me to sub. So while the kids were in school, I remember back in the day, in kindergarten was half a day and I had to wait until my youngest got into first grade so I would be available to sub. And so at the age of like 45, I started subbing. And I told you I came into this late. I subbed for several years and after several years in 2007, I was hired for the one job I did not want, which was the school nurse at the high school. Because I wanted the littles. Everybody wants the littles. And I wasn't really thrilled about the high school, but that's where I belonged. I think God has a sense of humor. That's where I belonged. He was right about this. So I worked as a classified nurse for several years and went back to college. At the age of 58, I went back to grad school and got my school nurse certificate from Ashland University with a 4.0 average. And I brag about that because there's a purpose for me telling you that. Got my school nurse licensure and at the age of 63, I was hired as the licensed school nurse at the high school. And I've been doing it now. I'm 70. It's time. I want to retire while I'm still healthy enough to enjoy it. But I tell you all these things, how old I was, because my message is it's never too late and you're never too old. I was not too old to go back to school. And that's why I was so proud of that 4.0 because I'm competing with people who are half my age and I'm getting the straight A's. So I was proud of that because it can be done. You're never too old to go back and do what it is you really want to really want to do. And you're never too old and it's never too late to make a difference in the lives of others. So thank you Beaver Creek Schools for having me for the last almost 19 years. I'm glad I've been able to make a difference and I'm just looking forward to the next part of my life. But I am so going to miss my kids and my coworkers. I have wonderful staff working with me and I'm going to so miss them. And going to figure out the next part of my life. So thank you very much.
If I may just add something. Yes, you do a lot of Band-Aids and a lot of mints and things like that for kids who just need a break from the room, but you take care of kids that are most vulnerable and the parents that have those kids, that's not possible.
And now, kind of a behind the scenes job, we're going to take some time to recognize Mr. Chuck Zoller by him and Mr. Schubert, please.
Chuck. 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 17 years ago, we started doing this thing together. You were the very first person I hired and it was the right choice. I've never regretted it to day. Chuck is one of those people that nobody knows, but everybody needs. Kind of like the Fantastic Four, like Mr. Fantastic himself, flexible and intelligent. I don't know if there was a single day I didn't walk in his office three different times with three different major things to do and he just handled them. And if he didn't know what to do, he might grumble at first, you know, we all have that. But he always got it done. Guy works hard. Look. Worked hard. Worked hard. You're still working. I have to read the fillbacks. See, I don't know if you're still. Like the thing, rock solid. 7:30 in the morning, you knew who was going to be in his seat every day. It was Chuck. 4:30, you knew who was going to be out the door. It was Chuck. Rock solid. Couldn't ask for more. Oh, Johnny Flane, my gosh, the heat. If you ever have a vendor problem and you want somebody to get to know them intimately and to get them to do what they need, it's this guy. He picks up the phone, "Never mind, let me talk to your manager." That's like the first sentence. And hot wings. I found it early on that this guy liked hot sauce. I like hot sauce. We'd go to Roosters, no, not Roosters at the time, B-Dubs, and he'd say, "Hey, I need the lunch special mango habanero, side salad, and three blue cheese, please, and unsweet tea. Don't bring him sweet tea." I'm sweating from mango habanero and he's like, "Yeah, yeah, this is hot." And now he's kind of invisible. So you know, he's got all the fantastic going on there. You've seen me at my best and at my worst and you've always handled it gracefully. I appreciate that. One thing a lot of people don't know about Chuck is he also is full of trivia. Guy knows everything. If you are somewhere and there's a trivia contest, you want him on your team. Right? I've learned a lot from him. I also learned some not-so-fun things like, you know, you can ask him later, but he'll know what I'm talking about. When you go on vacation, if there's an ATV, be very careful. And sometimes there are great reasons to cry over spilled milk. You know exactly what I mean there. Chuck, there's no replacement. We will get the job done. We'll figure out what to do. But you take part of Beaver Creek with you, what you've done for all of us, the staff and supporting our students, who all do, we really appreciate that. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, board members. Back in 2007, my wife retired after 30 years of special needs teacher. And every year since then, I hear, "Boy, it's sure going to, I wish you were retired. It's sure going to be nice if you're retired." Well, we'll see how she feels in a couple of weeks. But yeah, Beaver Creek's been great to me. Back in 2008, I interviewed with Mike and moved here from Springfield with my wife and we were empty nesters, bought our forever home. And everybody else matriculated here at Beaver Creek. My daughter and my two wonderful grandsons, they're both good at park foot. My son Neil, who you worked for a Beaver Creek company. So we're all centered in Beaver Creek and it's just been wonderful. It's a wonderful place to live. As far as the people I work with, couldn't ask for a better group. The central office staff is wonderful and everybody in the district is, it's just great to, great to work with. It's been a wonderful experience. It's been a learning experience. We've made a lot of major changes over the years, but I feel like I'm leaving everything in very good hands. So I appreciate everything and thank you very much.
That's hot sauce and blue cheese. He doesn't need that.
All right, congratulations to both of you. You both will be very much missed. Our next presentation, tonight, we're excited to welcome a special guest who has traveled to Beaver Creek all the way from Atlanta, Georgia. Barb Maimon is the Strategic Director at Seven Mindsets, a national organization that partners with school districts across the country to support student and staff well-being, culture, and leadership development. Seven Mindsets is built on a powerful belief that when we change our mindsets, we can change our lives. Barb works hand-in-hand with school and district leaders nationwide and has seen firsthand the incredible impact of transformational leadership. She came here tonight because what we are celebrating tonight is truly that important. Please join me in welcoming Barb Maimon as she presents a very special award to one of our very own. Come on up, Barb.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Here, I got a lower it quite a bit, probably. Is that good? Thank you for having me here. I, it's hard to follow. My eyes are watering, those two retirements. It's truly special to see the type of community that you all encourage and inspire. It makes me want to come work here myself. So really, congratulations to the retirees. But I jumped on a plane for a reason and it wasn't, you know, the easiest to get here just because of it's a busy time of the year for all of us, but it's really important for me to be here in person because what we are recognizing tonight is something that really will be seen, the impact will be seen decades and years and generations to come. So a little bit, just going to take a little bit of time to share with you why I'm here and a little bit about the special award that I'm presenting tonight. Seven Mindsets, I've been there for about a decade now, almost a decade, and I always say I have the best job in the world. It's like mission work because everything that we do is about helping schools and school districts, schools and school districts create a culture and climate where, you know, teachers want to go to work and feel inspired and students feel like they have a safe place and, you know, it's a family. And I see that you guys, even though you're not using Seven Mindsets, you're doing that already. You're doing that important work to make students and staff feel special. One of the things I notice as I'm traveling to districts across the nation, I used to, I used to work in like 40 different states. We're national and international, but now I only have four and I've picked Ohio as one of my favorites, even though I live in Georgia. I have four states. And one of the things I noticed is that at the leadership level, especially district leadership, school building leadership, you know, oftentimes you're on your own. You're trying to really please all different parties. You're trying to keep the school board happy, the parents happy, and the teachers happy, and the students happy. It's a lot and there's not always a lot of people that you can complain to because you got to stay strong and tough for them. And so I wanted to create this award to recognize those transformational leaders who are really standing out in the community. I thought, what a better way to give back. One of our mindsets is live to give than to recognize these leaders. So I put out a contest to the entire state. Every single school district in the state had the opportunity to nominate their transformational leader. And we saw so many nominations from all over the place, but you know, a few just rose to the top. And I'm happy to share that your very own Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bobby Fiore, was one of the shining stars. She's receiving runner-up to this really special award because of her vision, her rounded leadership, her relentlessness to do what's right for kids and for staff. So I'm going to kind of go real quickly. If I, if I were to share everything that was... If I, if I were to share everything that was, was talked about in her nominations, you would've been here probably for three hours. I know y'all need to get home. So, I'm gonna go very briefly, and I'm gonna go through each of the mindsets and just do one little quick thing that she does to really live the mindset. Everything is Possible is our first mindset. It's all about, you know, what Dr. Fiori, Fiori does is she takes, and I gotta do some cheat notes because there's so much, but she takes every challenge with vision and hope. When the staff recognized the need for some sensory spaces for the students and emotional supports for the kids, she didn't just approve them and find the money to fund it, she actually helped buy supplies, purchase supplies, get, you know, the plan organized and bring the vision to life. Her leadership has elevated the MTSS to an entirely new level in the district. Second mindset, Passion First. She's a lifetime learner. You can, you can tell her passion in the job she does from, she never stops reading, she never stops exploring, she never stops discovering new ways to support students and staff and making everyone feel comfortable and welcome. From Slumberkins, Slumberkins, to, you know, different SEL tools and books, her passion shows up every day in her job because she loves the work and she believes in the power to change. We are connected. I don't think I've ever felt more of a connection than what you guys are showing here tonight. Really, really special. Not all school districts have this, I can tell you. And one of the things that, that she does is that she helps people to feel valued and be seen. It's rare to have a Assistant Superintendent who's successful and, you know, is always there to lead with deep, deep human connections. Relationships are very important to her, so people don't just report to her, they grow with her. Attitude of Gratitude. The first thing she did, one of the first things for her administrators, was to give each of them a gratitude journal. And, you know, she knows that when you show up and your attitude, your reflections are gonna impact the work that you do. And so, her leadership begins and ends with appreciation and gratitude. Hundred percent accountable. She sets high standards for herself and others. And one of her sayings, when something doesn't go right, it's something like this, "We'll own it, we'll learn from it, and we'll be better because of it." So, it's okay to make mistakes. You've gotta sometimes try things and fail, but you're gonna grow as a result of it. That's accountability. Two more, we're almost there, but Live to Give. This is the reason I'm here, to try to recognize those, those leaders that are doing amazing things. She is generous with not only her, her thoughts and ideas, but with her time and her tools and her knowledge, and she shares them with those around her to make them better. If you've worked under her or with her, you've probably received a book or a podcast suggestion or maybe just a moment where she's really listening to you and supporting you. That's Dr. Fiori. And finally, the time is now, you know, acting with intention, acting with urgency. She knows that students don't get a chance, you know, to repeat a grade or wait for them to feel ready to get to that level. It's that, it's the power of, "Yeah, well, I'm not good at this, you're not good yet." So, that's why she's not afraid to challenge old systems. She's not afraid to step into the unknown, and she knows that if it means better for kids, it's all worth it. And so, she models urgency, innovation, and courage. And so, Dr. Fiori, for your leadership and for your guidance and for the person you are transforming Beaver Creek City Schools, I'm honored to present you with the Seven
Barb, thank you very much. Everything you just said about Bobby is spot-on. It's not just one book, it's many books that she has given all of us. So, no, we are, we are better because of her, so we appreciate that.
Congratulations, Bobby.
All right, our next presentation this evening, we have had a number of communications, I believe, with the board and with the administration regarding release for religious instruction. So, I've asked Mr. Wren to really give an update, kind of where the district stance is with our board policy and kind of what that looks like. So, at this point, I'll have Mr. Wren. This is his first presentation as our Director of Student Services. So, we're very excited to have Dale in this position.
Good evening, I'm Dale Wren, Director of Student Services. I have to get used to saying that, not Principal of Beaver Creek. I just wanna take a few moments to explain what Mr. Wren just alluded to, our policy with regards to release time for religious instruction. Before I go forward, I'll go backwards. We have had a policy since May of 2015, but at some point last year, I think in the spring, there was an update through Ohio Revised Code. Kind of the key update was a sentence that said districts will collaborate with designated entities to identify that release time and allow those families, if they wish to participate in these programs. So, that was kind of the key point. That's what my office is responsible for, to make sure that collaboration occurs and facilitate that. To kind of get into our board policy, we have defined core curriculum time is not times that we would release students, it has to be ungraded time. So, if you look at all levels of our buildings, that really leaves lunch, recess, study hall at the secondary level, and possibly like library time. I know we have a skills lab class, I'm not sure if that's graded, but, you know, if you put it in the bin of ungraded, those are times that could be designated for students to be released for that. I think it's to maybe understand it best, think of it as a parent coming to the school to pick up their child to go to an appointment. We have developed a form that all three parties in this would sign. The parent would sign the form, the sponsoring group would sign the form, and lastly, that would get to the building principal would also sign the form. And at that point, the student could be released, just like they would for any other release to the Guardian. At that point, as a district, we are not responsible for the transportation or liable for the student, and then they can go receive their instruction and then return to the building. Just as, like I said, if you use the analogy of a, a parent taking their child to an appointment, be similar to that. I have, we have no students participating at this point, but I was contacted by Lifewise. I believe the last week of July or the first week of August, so I have met with their representative and shared information so they can work through the logistics that they would need to if they have families that would choose to do that. So, this is something I can revisit in May and share with the board, the number of students that have participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. All right, our final presentation this evening, we're gonna have Dr. Fiori come up, and she's gonna share about federal and state funding.
Each year, we're required to present how the use of some of the funds we receive from the federal government, IDEAAB funds for students with special, that receive special education, and for our Student Success and Wellness Funds and our Disadvantaged Impact Pupil Services Funds. So, this, I just wanted to take a minute to explain how we use those funds. Our, the first one is our Student Success of Wellness and Disadvantaged People Impact Funds. These funds are for initiatives to support the wraparound services to really meet the needs of our students in Ohio. They prioritize physical and mental health, and there's, they look for strategic community partnerships. So, what we receive is we receive about three hundred and eight thousand, and we use that to fund our social workers' salaries and benefits and some of our community partnerships with Green County Educational Service Center to get school-based mental health services. Our social workers work with students in small groups, working on skill-building, maybe regulating emotions or making friends or following directions, whatever the need may be. These services are with parent permission. We contact parents if we're gonna work with our students outside of just, "I'm having a really bad day and I want someone to talk to." Any types of these services are with parent permission. Our Disadvantaged Pupil Impact Funds, those are sixty thousand, around sixty thousand three hundred and thirty-five, and that is McKenney-Vento Liaison. That is for students who experience homelessness. So, a portion of this person's salary is paid for with these funds, and they help, they assist with setting up transportation, free lunch, any coordinating, any supplies or materials, and helping connect them with community resources to get housing or whatever they may need. So, that's how we use those funds. The use of IDEAAB funds, IDEAAB funds are provided by the federal government, and it's for the education of children with disabilities, and that is ages three to twenty-one. Our total allocation is approximately two million dollars. And what we use that money on, the majority of it, is salary and benefits because to provide services for students with disabilities, you have to have people. You have to have intervention specialists, special needs assistants, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision therapists, hearing therapists, it goes on and on, based on what the needs of the child are. It's an individualized education plan. So, you can see, we spend one point nine eight-ish million on intervention, and that covers nine intervention specialists, one speech and language pathologist, and you can see two specialized supervisors, a school psychologist, and so on. So, the majority of it goes to staffing that doesn't cover near the staff we need to support around fourteen hundred students with disabilities, but the funding we do receive from the federal government is used for that. Online purchase services is a smaller portion, that's about sixty-one, sixty-one thousand, and that is for intervention programs and behavior support services and online subscriptions. Those things are more like if we have supplemental programs for kids, like we have a supplemental reading fluency program, only for students who have that goal in their IEP, that money comes out of this. It's an online service because we pay per child for the subscription. Same for IXLs, it's a language arts and math supplemental remediation program. The behavior support services are for children with challenging behavior. We contract with a board-certified behavior analyst, and their role is to go in if our normal building supports cannot help change that behavior, we call in somebody to do observations and help us write a behavior plan so we can get the child demonstrating the behavior to be successful in school. Some supplies money is there, Braille books. We have students that are blind and they require books translated into Braille, created in Braille. We also have kids with hearing impairments that require amplification and FM systems. And then, our speech and language pathologists require materials to support our students and assessments. A portion of our money also goes to non-publics. Our non-publics located in Beaver Creek that can, that opt into services through IDEAAB, we're like a pass-through for them. We're the local educational association that provides them, like kind of administers their money. So, we make sure they spend it right, it's allocated for the right things, and it's used according to the guidelines set forth by the state. And this year, right now, we believe, it's early in the year, that it's all gonna be used in supplies. However, you, if there's a budget revision, if they decide to use it for something else, we would help them make changes, but right now, that's where we anticipate it being spent. Okay? And that's it. Does, okay?
Any questions for the board? One quick one, it's a minor, but for the administration we do of the non-public schools, obviously that has administrative costs associated with that. Do we get any reimbursement for that work that we do, or is that just an extra burden on public schools?
Just an extra burden on public schools.
And that concludes presentations for this evening.
Okay. I want to question some comments from the public. We have seven speakers tonight. Thank you for coming in. So, I'm just gonna say this to the whole room, because they're after coming each time. You will have three minutes from which to speak. You need to tell us your name and address. Should your comments require a comment from any of us, somebody will get back to you because there will be no interaction from the board tonight. And with that, first speaker is Andrea Bauer.
Thanks, Andrea Bauer, 2564 Duane M. Place in the town, Beaver Creek Township. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rotten and the board for allowing me to speak. I'm here once again to speak about the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit, and I see that it is on the agenda. And I would like to mention that on June the twenty-fourth, the Vouchers Hurt Ohio won in court. The ed voucher program was deemed illegal. Battle number one, it will be definitely upheld. That's why I'm urging the board to support the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. I'd like you to join Centerville and Fairborn and Xenia and Yellow Springs and over three hundred other districts, including comparative districts like Westerville, Worthington, Upper Arlington, and Lakota. They have all joined. Why should you join? Because Article Four, Section Two says, "No religious or other sect or sex shall receive any exclusive right to or control of any part of school funds for, of this state." It's illegal. Why? The state is required by law to adequately fund private school, public schools. It's in the Constitution. Since nineteen ninety-seven, our funding has been ruled illegal. Still is. Vouchers primarily go to families that, whose students are already enrolled in private schools. Ninety percent of the participants in vouchers are not low-income people. Private schools, unlike public schools, select their students. How do they select them? Well, they look at race, they look at gender, they look at political views, they look at religion, they might look at athleticism, academics. We live in a very divided society. Encouraging, through state money, participation in private schools widens the division because it creates segregation. Public schools, as we all well know, bring our communities together. You know, I was sitting by a lady who said, you know, she went to Beaver Creek and now she's back here and her kids went to Beaver Creek, and that's because we build a sense of community. And that's important. It's we allow that our students to learn and grow together. It's good for our democracy. I wanted to talk about the taxation, but, oh, well. Thank you.
Claire Shinskey, I live at thirty-one twenty-one Patsy Drive. Thank you to the board, Ms. Rotten, Ms. Kitzmiller, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Congratulations to our retirees, and also Dr. Fiori for her recognition. I'm here today to talk about the board policy thirty, or fifty-two twenty-three, the release time for religious, religious instruction, where hereon I'll refer to as RTRI, which was most recently updated in May of this year. Thank you to Mr. Wren for going over the outline of that earlier. My first request is regarding background checks. Any volunteers in our school district that are around students while unsupervised by staff members are required to undergo BCI and FBI background checks. Ohio law allows school districts to also make that same requirement of a provider of RTRI. Adopting this policy would be a proactive approach to student safety and one that I am asking the board to consider adopting. I am also concerned about the potential impact on missed class time and intervention minutes. How will the district handle habitual tardiness for programs that result in excessive unexcused student absences? If intervention minutes are taking place during lunch or recess, does the district have an official policy or plan on how to conflict any, or how to handle any potential conflict with an RTRI program? Because those minutes are mandated by law. There are rules for parents and guardians when pulling their children out during the day. day, and what constitutes unexcused or unexcused absence, which can result in repercussions if you don't follow those guidelines. I am respectfully requesting that the district consider updating the policy to include a mechanism to, to handle excessive unenforced absences or tardiness resulted from returning from these types of programs. And that would hold any program accountable, up to impacting their ability to offer classes in the district. I know the district administrators and staff have the best interests of our students at heart, and I'm asking the district to ensure that there are guardrails in place to prioritize education and student safety, and ensure that RTRI programs aren't attempting to take advantage of the law, our public school resources, or our tax dollars. I respectfully request a response on these concerns from the board. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Nicole Craw. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicole Rotten-Craw. I live at twenty-eight eighty-seven Stone Mill Court. I'm here tonight as both a parent, my two children attend Valley Elementary, and a taxpayer. We moved into our house when my son was four weeks old, because we wanted him to grow up in Beaver Creek, where my husband did. He is a ninety-nine Beaver Creek High School grad. I did not grow up here. But over the last ten years, Beaver Creek has become my home. I'm the daughter of two public high school principals with a combined fifty-plus years in the public education system, in one of the largest districts in Texas. A district that would never allow a program like Lifewise Academy and its public schools. Because while Texas has its flaws, it has long respected the separation of church and state. I want to speak about Lifewise Academy from the perspective of parental rights this evening. Families already have full freedom to raise their children in their faith traditions, in their homes, churches, and chosen communities. Religious instruction is a deeply personal choice, one that belongs with parents, not facilitated inside public schools. When the district opens the door to Bible-based programming, it crosses a line. Even if participation is voluntary, the school is still giving a platform and legitimacy to a particular religion. That creates pressure on children and on families to either conform or be singled out. No parent should have to explain why their child isn't joining a school-sponsored religious activity. My husband and I are not raising our children in the church. And even without Lifewise, my kids have already been questioned by their peers. Where do you go to church? Do you believe in God? We send our children to Beaver Creek City Schools for academics, critical thinking, and preparation for their future, not religious formation. Your responsibility as a board is to ensure the district remains neutral, inclusive, and focused on education. I urge you to protect that trust by keeping religious instruction where it belongs, in families' hands, not in Beaver Creek City Schools. And as an add-on, also, I'm with Ms. Bauer, joined the voucher lawsuit. Thank you.
Anna Baltis. I live at thirty-three seventy Suburban Drive in Beaver Creek. My pronouns are she/her. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak tonight. I'm also here to talk about Board Policy five-two-two-three, Release Time for Religious Instruction. The nineteen fifty-two Supreme Court decision in Zorach versus Clausen allowed for students to be released during the school day for religious instruction, as long as certain conditions are met. One of the many reasons we love Beaver Creek schools is the excellent education and opportunities they provide for students like my child, who's in fourth grade. When I was in fourth grade, I attended a religious release time program. I was too young at the time to understand that it was not a school-sponsored class. My parents made the decision to sign me up. My entire class went, and our school teacher enforced participation and policed our off-site behavior. All of this naturally blurred the lines for me as a nine-year-old, and created a lot of pressure and anxiety for me. That raises the question, what happens if a Beaver Creek student who has signed up for release time by their parents tells their teacher, "I don't want to go today"? Just as a student may be excused but not compelled to pray during the school day, our policy must make clear that no student can be forced to attend a release time class against their will, even if a parent has signed them up. To do so would violate the student's First Amendment rights. My fourth-grade teacher created a system to reward or punish our entire class, based on the behavior report she received from the religious teacher each week. If our class got all good reports for the grading period, we would be rewarded with a pizza party. But if we received just one bad report in all those weeks, the party was off the table. The problem with my teacher's system was that it was actually unconstitutional. The Supreme Court in Zorach explicitly stated, "There shall be no comment by any principal or teacher on attendance or non-attendance of any pupil upon religious instruction," just as our policy states that school personnel cannot promote or discourage attendance or be involved with the provision of the release time program. I respectfully ask the board to amend Policy five-two-two-three to make clear that no student will be forced by the school to attend religious release time. Programs may not send behavior reports to public school personnel, and that public school teachers may not reward or punish students based on such reports. Finally, I urge the board to add clear enforcement mechanisms to the policy. Without defined consequences for violations, the policy cannot truly uphold the constitutional boundary that Zorach requires. I respectfully request a response to these matters from the board. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristen Kempf. I live at one-five-eight-zero Diplomat Drive. I'm a parent to both a recent BHS graduate and a current Beaver Creek student. I'm also a former public educator of eighteen years. I'm here tonight to talk about school vouchers in Ohio. As a teacher in a high-needs, underfunded school district, I saw firsthand the impact so-called school-choice vouchers has on public education systems. While prom, whoops. While promising to make private schools accessible to Ohio students and families seeking educational choice, access is only an illusion for poor and middle-class families. School vouchers do not fully cover the cost of private school tuition. Only families wealthy enough to afford to supplement the voucher to cover tuition, uniforms, and other costs associated with private education are able to use them. Meanwhile, each voucher defunds public school districts little by little, leaving students and educators with fewer resources and offerings for students. This effectively redlines, or segregates, Ohio's school districts. Those who are already wealthy enough to attend private schools are taking money from public school students with less privilege via school vouchers, leaving those who cannot supplement the vouchers with fewer resources, teachers, and ultimately, opportunities. I chose to become a public educator and send my own children to public schools, because I believe in the public school systems as our country's greatest and earliest equalizers. Public schools are already sorely underfunded, tasked with teaching and providing specialized services to every child who shows up. Private schools enjoy the privileges of choosing who they accept and how their success is measured and reported. I ask that the leadership of our city's school district stands up for all Ohio students to keep public money in our public school systems. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Hope I'm not mispronouncing verse. Is it Kiwi Grandi? Is it Kiwi?
Um, Kiwi.
Kiwi, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Take your time.
Pronouns they/them. I live at twenty-four thirty-seven North Knoll Drive in Beaver Creek. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on the RTRI tonight. I am also a parent and a taxpayer. My husband is a two thousand thirteen Beaver Creek High School grad, and we moved back here for the excellency of the schools. Beaver Creek has many students of diverse backgrounds, thanks to Wright Pat and Wright State. Although the main religious affiliation in our area includes direct sects of Christianity, we do have students who practice Judaism, Hinduism, and Islam, to name a few. From their website, Lifewise aligns themselves with, quote, "historic orthodox Christian beliefs," and they follow a biblical literalist dogma. The children of families who follow different religions may not allow their children to attend instruction with their classmates who do have parental permission. This may lead to feelings of exclusion, especially if those who attend come back with treats, literature, and invitations to pizza parties. As one parent who I spoke to in the Kahana School District relayed, their parent, their child felt left out and scorned, according to this parent. I have, and ha, I have, I have and have been a school-aged child, and feeling left out can be detrimental to their mental health. Forming strong bonds and exclude, as a child, is important, and exclusion can lead to depression, self-doubt, and even possibly poor academic performance. Another example of alienation I'd like to touch on is the attitude towards LGBTQ community, single-parent families, and same-sex marriage families. In their discussion of hard topics in the FAQ section of their website, Lifewise describes these people as sinners. The impact of hearing that could be detrimental to students. According to the Trevor Project, forty-three percent of Ohio LGBTQ youth have considered suicide. Twelve percent have attempted. Risk factors included mistreatment, stigma, and discrimination. As Dr. Fiori spoke about, supporting students with disability is a priority for BCS, and at this juncture, I don't know what accommodations would be provided for any students with physical, mental, or learning disabilities. And as a disabled person, as myself, I hope these students would not feel excluded either. BCS has a mission statement in their handbook that states, "Together we provide a safe, supportive learning environment to engage all students with innovative experiences to reach their greatest potential." Public schools should honor secular, and only secular, education during the school day, so that all students feel welcome, represented, and respected. It is not a part of BCS' mission for our children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rachel Pyle. I live at two-eleven Stratford Lane, and I'm the Program Director for Lifewise Academy Beaver Creek. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I recognize many of you as my family has lived, worked, and served in the Beaver Creek community for over ninety years. As a third generation of Beaver Creek graduates from my family, I owe many opportunities I've been provided to Beaver Creek City Schools. I'm excited for my family's future, as my own children now represent the fourth generation to enter Beaver Creek City Schools. Needless to say, I'm a passionate advocate for our schools, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you about how our students' lives can be enriched even further. Our schools already set a high standard with outstanding academics, dedicated teachers, and a commitment to holistic student development. But imagine adding a layer of moral and character education that complements this foundation without interfering with the school day. This is where Lifewise Academy comes in. For those unfamiliar, Lifewise Academy is a nonprofit program that offers Bible-based character education to public school students during school hours. It's off-campus and at no cost to the district. It's fully voluntary, parent-approved, and operates under release time policies that have been upheld by the Supreme Court since nineteen fifty-two. This program is also supported by Ohio Revice Code, which has been effective since two thousand and fourteen, and our own school board policy, which has existed since two thousand and fifteen. Lifewise allows kids to step away for a short weekly class, once a week, maximum of one hour, during lunchtime or a non-graded course, as was discussed, to learn timeless values like kindness, integrity, resilience, through engaging stories and activities. Now, why is this beneficial for our schools? Studies in real-world data show that, studies in real-world data show remarkable impacts. Schools parting with Lifewise see increased attendance rates by nearly seven percent, as students get excited about this positive break in their routine. Suspensions drop significantly, up to twenty fewer in-school incidents per school, which leads to fewer disruptions in a calmer learning environment. Bullying decreases, classroom behavior improves, and even academic performance gets a boost, all while freeing up school resources, since Lifewise handles the transportation, volunteers, and facilities for their classes. For Beaver Creek City Schools, this means our already high-achieving students can thrive even more with better mental health support and character-building that aligns with our community's values. The benefits extend to our entire community as well. Lifewise fosters stronger family and neighborhood ties by involving local volunteers, parents, grandparents, who mentor our youth. It builds a sense of unity and purpose, equipping kids with tools to navigate life's challenges, reducing community issues like youth delinquency, and promoting empathy and service. In a world full of distractions, this program grounds our children in principles that last a lifetime, all while respecting diverse beliefs, since participation is optional. I've seen firsthand how Beaver Creek schools shape bright futures, and Lifewise Academy is the perfect partner to elevate that mission. We can embrace this initiative to invest in our kids' hearts as much as their minds. And I would also be glad to discuss anyone's concerns. If there's any parents that are worried about Lifewise, I'm glad to speak with them. I have a lot of different resources that I've provided people.
Okay, I'm waiting to motion a second to approve the July fifteenth Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Goldblum?
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Ravano?
Yes.
Mrs. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Items for board discussion?
Yes, evening. We have four items for board discussion. First one, we put on here is the Vouchers Hurt Ohio lawsuit. We've, we've been looking at this for probably the last few months, and I know the board was planning for tonight to look at that. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to the board.
Okay. Sorry.
And I don't know if the board would like to talk about this now. I know later in the agenda, we've got a vote on this as well, so I'll leave that to the board.
Go for it now. Okay. So, we have been discussing this topic since May, and we've had the Ohio's Voucher Coalition convince to speak to us last month. So, I would like input from each board member. We've had a whole month to think about what was presented to us last month, questions we had asked, questions and answers are posted on the district website for everybody to see, in case we weren't at the meeting. So, I would like to open this up to our board for discussion. Mr. Taylor, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I only wanted to start.
See? There you go.
Get a chance.
Your lucky day.
I am very. So, okay, well, now, here we are with this, and both sides seem to have some strong arguments. I do tend to lean one way more than another right now, but it is one of those things that, in fact, does it take money away from public schools? Yes, in a global sense, it sure does. It has impacts on us, mostly on a, kind of a secondary sense, in my book. But it's a tough one, really. So, I don't have too much, much to offer you on that right at this point.
Okay. Okay.
I can tell you that this topic has caused more sleepless nights for me than almost anything you've discussed as board members. There's three things that board members are tasked to do that are our responsibility in writing. The first thing is, we hire and fire the superintendent. The second thing that we're charged with is to hire and fire the treasurer. Those are the only two employees, all right, that the board has. The third thing is to set board policy. Those are our three written responsibilities. But there were also some, what I call, unwritten expectations. The first would be, and we all know this, we should not be involved in the day-to-day operations, all right, of a school district. That's why we have a superintendent. The second unwritten expectation is that we need to be as fiscally prudent as possible with taxpayer dollars. And then the third unwritten expectation, and we all know this, and we all believe this, and that's that all kids can learn, and we have to do whatever is necessary to make this happen. And every decision we make has to be what is best for kids. Now, the voucher program, as it exists today, does not allow us to do that. It does not allow us to do our job. The voucher system started off as a way families of low income could still have school choice for their children. The system today, however, allows for vouchers, either full vouchers or partial vouchers for everyone. And this is not how it was designed to be. As I just said a moment ago, we all believe that kids can learn. And personally, I believe, and again, I'm not speaking for the board now, I'm speaking for me. Personally, I believe that families should be able to choose schools, all right, for their children, based on their religious beliefs, based on pedagogy, or based on curriculum. Okay? But I also believe that if a family has the means, they should be responsible for paying for their children's tuition. I do not want freedom of school choice to go away for every family. Now, as you've heard earlier this evening, and I can't remember if it was Andri that said it, or Kristen that said it, and I thank you for your comments, as they, as they said this evening, it's, it's in the hands of the court system right now. And I do not see, nor any of the numerous people that I have talked to, see this being resolved soon. And everyone agrees that when it is finally decided, it's going to be challenged or appealed. And as we mentioned already today, there's over six hundred school districts in the state of Ohio. Half of the school districts in Ohio have joined the Coalition, the other half have not. So most people can see both sides. You know, there's no right or wrong answer. There's only opinions on this matter right now. Now, my recommendation, okay, and again, you can take it for what it's worth, but my recommendation is that we table a vote tonight. There's no rush on joining the Coalition. We table the vote for approximately a year, to see what decision comes out of the court, and to see where the process stands. You know, the bottom line for me is this: I want to make sure that all kids have the same opportunities so they can have better educational outcomes. But at the same time, I want us to be fiscally responsible. And a vote tonight does not guarantee either one of those to happen. So in summary, I want for kids from low-income families to have the opportunity to get vouchers so they can attend the school of their choice. But I also want any family that wants school choice, if they have the means, to be responsible for paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair of the President. Go ahead.
So I've been pretty vocal about where I stand on this. I'm going to start with, try and boil down my thoughts on this matter to three main points. Point number one, I believe Beaver Creek residents deserve a tax break on their property taxes. We've just gone through two bond issues, where we've been told that we cannot afford to build the high school we need to staff our, to, to fund, and to, to be able to teach our elementary school students, to be able to move our children around the way we need to. And when I have heard from members of the community, it has not been that they don't support the schools. It has been that we are wildly overtaxed here on Beaver Creek. And as a resident myself, I moved here a little over fifteen years ago from Massachusetts, which is not exactly known for being a low-tax kind of place. I bought a less expensive house and started paying more money in property taxes. I look at my tax bill right now, and I see the city schools are the biggest item on there. And I'm sure a lot, and everybody, I think, is in that situation. And you'd be excused if maybe you didn't dig deeper, and maybe you just thought, well, obviously, the most expensive thing is the schools, so it must be the school's fault. I think a lot of residents feel that way, if they don't really dig into it. But I've spent the time digging into it, and I have, in my past four years here, really looked at our school finances and how our school compares to various other districts. We are exceptional in that we spend over seventeen hundred dollars less per student than the average district in, in Ohio. We are extremely efficient with the money that our taxpayers give us. While doing that, we also outperform over eighty percent of the other schools in the state of Ohio. We have a phenomenal school district, which is making exceptional performance with very little budget. So then the question is, well, why are our property taxes so high? And the answer comes down to the fact that the state does not fund public schools in Ohio the same way they do in almost every other state in this country. So I lived in Massachusetts, and I went back and I dug up, okay, how much money was the state funding versus local schools funding in Massachusetts? And it was close to eighty percent state funding. Local funding was very, very small. It was all coming out of state funding. And in Michigan, I grew up in a fairly affluent neighborhood, probably one of the most affluent in, in the state, frankly. And even there, the state was paying sixty percent of that school district's budget, right? And here, we're told that because we have a lot of property value in our district, that we only get ten percent of the cost to educate each child, according to the Fair School Funding Plan. And that's why our property taxes are so high. And so when we talk about a program like this voucher plan, that's taking a billion dollars a year out of our state budget and giving it to children, as Denny said, over ninety percent of whom are above the poverty line and were already enrolled, had already made school choice, they don't need the vouchers to be able, to be able to empower that school choice, okay? This program is not only misappropriating state funding that should be going to public schools, but it's not actually serving the, the people it was originally intended to serve. What started out as a program to help poor students succeed has turned into welfare for the wealthy, giving ninety percent of this money to families over five times the poverty line. And what started out as a program to enable school choice is now mostly supporting families wealthy enough to already have made that choice, and had already been sending their kids to private school, but are now able to enjoy an extra family vacation on the backs of our taxpayers. And I don't think that's fair. So for those reasons, I believe that this is poor tax policy and needs to, needs to be ended. The second reason, and my second and third are shorter, I promise, that's the longest one. My second reason is when we all joined the board, we swore an oath to the Ohio Constitution. And as we heard earlier today, the Ohio Constitution couldn't be more clear, that Ohio will have a single system of education, a single system, not two systems. The voucher program creates a whole separate system for wealthy parents to be able to fund their kids' private education, okay? So it's not a single system, and it's giving money away to religious institutions in clear violation of the Ohio Constitution. We all know we have a process for amending the Constitution. We've done it a lot over the last couple of years. If we want to update the law so that it is legal to send money to religious institutions, then we can put that to the voters and have a vote. But we can't just pass a law that's unconstitutional. That's not okay. I believe in law and order, and we need to obey the Constitution in this state. And on that note, I will say one other thing. I understand that there are a lot of schools that are supporting this, and that we currently aren't. I will tell you that when I was in school, and we had group projects, I was not one of the kids who sat around and let everybody else do the work. I was one of the kids who did the work, and got the stuff done, and stayed up late, and turned in my homework, even if my groupmates weren't pulling their own weight. And I would call on us to be one of the school districts that does our homework in this group project, okay? We are the only ones who can stand up and fight for this taxpayer money that's going out the door. With the two billion dollars that has already been spent over the last two years to fund this program, we could have built eight new high schools in this state, like the one we needed right here in Beaver Creek, with no impact to property taxes. Free and clear, we could have just spent that money and built that high school. This year, we're on track to have four more high schools, but those are going out the door to this private voucher program, okay? That's what this means. This is real money. This is a lot of money. And we need to establish a policy in the state of Ohio that actually supports our local taxpayers. That's what I'm after. And finally, the third reason that I support voting for this and not delaying a vote on this is because of the lack of transparency and regulation in these third-party schools. There is no control. There is no ability to audit what happens to this money. Literally, these organizations could be taking our taxpayer money and spending it to lobby congresspeople in the State House to give more money to this program, okay? That's not okay with me. That should not be allowed. We need to have auditability and traceability of public funds, no matter where they go, even if it's private organizations. So as a stipulation of this program, or any program like it, I believe these, these other entities should be subject to the same kinds of financial regulations that we do exceptionally every single day, thanks to our fantastic treasurer and her staff. And that lack of transparency also applies to curriculum. We are open and clear with the public about what our curriculum is, what we teach, how we teach it. We encourage our community to come learn what we do. And these skills, these schools have no such obligation to be open and transparent about the curriculum, or test performance, or really anything. There is nothing to prevent these, there's very little to prevent these organizations from ripping off Ohio taxpayers, and ripping off the people who send their kids there. It's a gamble, and I think it's a battle. So for those three reasons, the tax break for our local citizens by properly funding public schools, so we don't have to flow down as much of that need to our community, our oath to the Constitution, and the rule of law and order, and the lack of transparency, I ask our board to vote yes on both moving forward with this issue and joining the voucher lawsuit. Thanks.
Okay, Mrs. Snodgrass.
Okay. I think both of you shared some points that I also believe to be true. I won't belabor them, but just mention, the original intent of vouchers is something that I think most of us can probably get behind. There are a lot of kids that don't have the opportunities that most of our kids in Beaver Creek have the opportunity to have. I volunteer with an organization called Choose for the Shoe List. I work in a lot of schools, come here as well. There's low-income kids in Beaver Creek, too. But I work in a lot of schools, and I see a lot of kids that don't have what we have here in Beaver Creek. So the weight of that is on my mind, as, as if we make a decision, how does that affect those kids? And I hate to be one of the people that would take that opportunity away. That being said, the system now is not what it was designed for. I do think that giving money away to people who would otherwise be able to afford it, have already made that decision for their family, is not the right thing to do. That being said, I believe parents do have a choice. I'm a huge proponent of public schools. I have lots of friends who make other decisions, and that's everybody's family's choice to You know, state, state funding in general has been ruled unconstitutional for many, many years, and nothing's been done about it. So you can win a lawsuit, and still nothing changes. So I'm not saying that it won't, because it could, but I think there's a perception by some that just because we vote to join something, and perhaps that moves forward and is successful, according to what they're seeking, that all this money's just going to be written to a check, and Joy's going to get it in her mailbox. Like, that's not going to happen. Our state legislators do not care about funding public schools. They don't. I think that's something most of us can agree on. They're not going to just give us that money because those kids don't get it anymore. That's just not going to happen. If you think that, you're not, you don't understand public funding at all. Again, we spend far less, and we outperform other districts. I do think that the concern about regulation is a valid one. I think, you know, regardless of your faith background, or maybe you want to go to a STEM school, or whatever, those schools should be following several guidelines that we have to follow in terms of how money is spent, and how children are educated, and how their measurable items are accounted for, I guess, to a state legislature, particularly if they're, if they're receiving state funds. I don't think that's what this accomplishes necessarily. I think that's a, could be a separate issue. I've really gone back and forth on this over the several months. I think there's really good points on both sides. But having be closely associated with somebody in the legal field, legal things move real slow. If you're in any way affiliated with that, you understand that. I have a hard time voting to spend money. That's not mine. I try to remember every time I sit up here and when I make a decision, that the money we spend is, yes, I pray into it, so I'm a taxpayer, but I'm giving away money that is yours, or yours, or yours. And I really try to take that to heart. Spending sixteen thousand dollars a year right now for maybe no, excuse me, no result, I'm having a hard time with that. When we put forth a levy, that's different, because that's something you have an opportunity to have a voice in as a taxpayer, to support or not support. So that's not me making that decision to spend it for you. This would be doing that. And because of the, the fact that I just think this just had the success in the one court, I'm, like someone mentioned, there will be sure an appeal of all of this process. It's going to take a lot of time. I, I agree with Denny that I'm not sure that there's a reason to rush it, and I think we can reassess that, and I think we should, or whomever's on the board, if not all of us are on here. But I think, yeah, I mean, giving it a year is probably reasonable, and that's just where I stand with it right now.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to try not to repeat what everybody said, because you don't need to hear this again. But my position has always been very clear in how I felt about this. I do believe in school choice. Every parent has a right to choose a school your child should go to. I do believe that the way the vouchers originally were proposed for these kids in underperforming school districts didn't have a chance. The vouchers gave them a chance. I taught in Dane City Schools for one year, and I know the chances those kids didn't get. I'm not knocking Dane Public Schools. They try as hard as they can, and I've worked with those teachers there. But it's not a Beaver Creek, it's not a Fearborn, it's not a Centerville. And some of those kids, I had a friend of mine was a teacher, a principal, at one of the Proprietary Schools, and I'm not advocating for Proprietary Schools, or any private schools, but most of her kids were in the voucher program. They wouldn't have had a chance, had they not were given that chance, to go to a school. And yes, her school was accountable, they took all the state tests, because she felt as a principal, if those kids were going to her school, they were getting voucher money, she should be accountable. I'm not saying every school is. So to say all these schools are not accountable is not a true statement. I think that parents that send their kids to private schools should pay for those private schools. We shouldn't be paying for them. If you send your kid to private school, then you can afford to send your children there. Now, with that being said, after hearing the Coalition speak last month, right now, the lawsuit, they don't know the potential time. The question asked to the Coalition was, you know, what is the timeline for the resolution of the lawsuit? And I quote, their answer was, "Difficult to speculate. Much depends on the tenth district's calendar." Nobody knows how long this is going to take. When, once, like Mrs. Hines, once a decision's made, it's going to go to the Supreme Court, it's going to go to another court, and how long is that going to take? There is no guarantee, the Coalition can guarantee it. No one can guarantee that if- No one can guarantee that if vouchers are totally eliminated, that the money the state in their education budget that is going to the vouchers will come to the public schools. I personally don't see that happening, but that's just my opinion. Like Mr. Morrison said, there were 600 school districts in Ohio, 300 have joined. Each one of us, and myself in particular, as a board member and an educator, is sitting on this dais because we're here to support what's right for kids. Not just Beaver Creek kids, all kids. So while I don't agree that all these vouchers should be going to these other schools for people who can afford them, as an educator and a board member, whom my goal is to support kids and do what's right for them, the elimination of all vouchers, the only people it's going to hurt are these kids who would never have been given a chance had it not been for these vouchers. And their parents saying the chance and saying, "I want the voucher to put my kid in a school system that they have a chance." I want to give you an example. I personally called Carroll High School because I wanted questions answered. I'm tired of getting this answer from this person, this one this. You know, I'm a person. If you know me, I will go to the source and I'll listen to your opinion, but I need to go to the source and get the answers. Spelled to Max Blaski, he was very open and forthcoming to all my questions. Carroll has 670 students. All of them are on vouchers. Approximately 300 of those 670 students receive the full voucher program because their families are at or below poverty level. I'm not advocating for Carroll High School or any appropriate school. I just happened to call one school. It was local. This principal wasn't pushing for anything. He just answered my questions. I have played around with this. Like Mr. Morrison said, I've lost sleep. I think about this all the time. What's right for me, spending $16,000 of our taxpayer dollars is not what I could do at this point, not yearly, because there is no guarantee for me to say to our public, "I'm going to spend your money, which you have no say in, and I can't guarantee you anything," even though I don't believe that, like I said, I will say it over again, those schools should be getting voucher money for parents who can afford it. Number one, I can't spend our taxpayer dollars on something I have no proof or guarantee. And most of all, I can't take money away from kids who would never have a chance in life had it been for these vouchers, who rightfully were supposed to go to them to start with until the Ed Choice expansion took over. So for those reasons, I too would like to table this for another year because I don't see the courts doing anything. The voucher people have been in operation for 35 years. 2022 is when they even started to go after the Ed Choice. It'll be four years soon. We don't know. They don't even know. They said it. I quoted them. They don't even know how long this is going to take. And for those reasons, I too would like to table it.
I'd like to add one thing. Recognizing the concerns that, you know, it feels a little bit like we could be taking away a badly needed source of education for children who do need that voucher in order to be able to attend a better performing school. I would just like to remind everyone that the fact that this lawsuit is going to take a while and has very clearly lost in its first round gives our legislator plenty of time to come up with a solution that is lawful, complies with the Constitution, and still provides those students with a good option. So I do, while I do understand the hesitancy to do this because it feels a little bit like we're harming those kids, I think our legislature has plenty of time to figure out a solution for them.
Oh, we don't know they're going to do that.
No.
There's no guarantee.
But I don't feel like it's our responsibility is my point. It's theirs.
My responsibility as a board member and educator to protect every child, that's just my personal feeling. I'm not knocking you.
No, no, I understand.
Please understand that. But that's just my personal feeling.
Right. I just wanted to add that.
I mean, I think you're right. It should be on them, and they've had plenty of time. It's been, what, funding in general has been unconstitutional for years. Why won't any legislator stand up for kids? I don't understand it. They're just too worried about voting along their party lines. I don't care what your party is. Quit picking your vote because of the party line. Like, do the right thing for kids. But our state legislators, even our local ones, won't do it. And we've advocated and advocated, I mean, several of us have done that individually. I know the district has. I just, it's hard to put my trust in people who are clearly not doing their job for the last 20 years or so, so why, where would they start now?
Two brief comments, if I may. I'm hearing some very good discussions, so thank you. Number one, we have to stand up for all kids. That's the bottom line. I grew up in the city of Cleveland, okay? I would have been, and I'm not talking a suburb, I'm talking downtown Cleveland. I grew up in what was considered a low-wealth home. I was not getting the education that I thought I needed, so I went to a private high school. I went to that high school, and there was no such thing as vouchers. I got to school early and cleaned classrooms in the morning, and I stayed afterwards and cleaned after school. I got paid a dollar an hour, all right? But I knew the value of an education, all right? And so therefore, my point for saying that is, all kids have to have that opportunity to be successful. I'd also say that in 2022, Ohio State University did a survey, or they did a study, a research study, and it came up with students of, what do I call, from low-income families, given the opportunity to attend a charter school or a parochial school, et cetera. They performed better if they had that opportunity and they had a better chance of going on to college. So I don't want those kids to be cheated. What else can we hope for? And you guys said it a lot more eloquently than I can. There's one line item for education in the state budget. And that's wrong, because right now, anybody that applies for a voucher, that means that total pot of money becomes less for public schools. So what you're saying is, that needs to be changed. So there are several things, there are several things that can happen. But right now, I'm just speaking for me right now, I don't want to do anything that's going to harm any kid. And right now in this district, we've got 69 students that are attending private schools from low-income families, all right, on voucher money. And I want them to have an opportunity to learn and be successful. That's where I'm coming from.
You know the number of kids that are going to appropriate schools total? Not just low-income?
It's quite a bit more total. I don't know the exact number. All right, okay.
That's it. Yeah, I mean, at some point, you have to fight the fight. But if you don't fight the fight and stand back and let others fight the fight, you know, no, no battle's ever been won that way. So we all have to step up and fight the fight at some level or another. Whether we move this on down the road till next year's vote, personally, I think that might be a little bit too long to make the decision. But, you know, I think we as a school system need to step up and have a voice in this, because right now, we don't have a voice in this. Letting other people make the voice. That's it.
Well, after hearing everybody's comments tonight, I'm going to make a motion when we get to item 11 to table this voucher discussion until December of 2026, at which time the board then can revisit this topic or this and reopen the discussion or not. So I am going to make a decision, and I'm going to do this when we get to item 11. We can't do it at this point. So I'm just telling you, and you get to vote on it, yes or no? So it's not like I'm telling you this is what we're doing. I'm just telling you when we get to 11, that's when I'm going.
Robert Turles.
Correct. There you go. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for the conversation on that. We'll move to item two, and this may be a tag-team item with Mr. Sweeterman and Mr. Schuman.
Mr. Schuman said he'll chime in if he feels I'm not covering it properly.
He's standing outside.
He's ready.
He's going to watch you. He's going to evaluate it.
Oh, there it is.
So if I may, I would like to cover the next two items together in the same conversation because they are both directly related to each other. As we know, this evening, we celebrated the retirement of one of our members of our technology department. One of the things that we like to do to ensure that we're being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars is to evaluate positions when they come open, to evaluate job descriptions and evaluate pay structure and the structure within an organization. And so Mr. Schuman has the foresight to do that within the technology department. And after receiving the resignation of a staff member in his department, he spent some time conducting and reviewing research in regards to the best practices in staffing technology departments in school districts. And he compared what we do here, what those best practices are, and what other school districts and comparable school districts do. Our technology department employees were involved in that conversation. I can tell you, Mike takes very seriously the opinions and values the opinions of the people in his department. And they identified a list of areas that they felt our district needs to work on and address. That included additional systems that have been regularly added throughout the district over a period of time, things like HAPARA and Parent Square that we're using now to better our services, but they do have impact on our technology department. The reality of cybersecurity and data privacy and the importance of those things to our families and our communities and our staff members, we house a lot of private data, and that's important for us to make sure we're doing those things well. Our expanding network monitoring responsibilities and activities that we do to mitigate those threats to our systems, our Wi-Fi system operations across the district, and updating our management systems that we have, and looking at our computer warranty work that is done. Those are all items that our department said need to be looked at. And including, in addition to that, was then also the reality of mobile device repairs. Every student in our district has a mobile device that requires attention, care, and regular maintenance. And so through that conversation and his studies, he's brought to the board and through our HR department, we worked together on a job description for a new position with the intent of not filling the network and systems administrator position for the resignation it received, but going forward with a new job description for a junior, junior network and systems administrator position in the school district and hiring an additional IT support technician with the emphasis on mobile device repairs. So from a numbers standpoint, what that looks like is, you have a job description in front of you tonight for junior network and systems administrator. You have a updated manager coordinator exempt salary schedule that includes what that position being added would look like. The individual selected for, or individuals selected for junior and network administrator positions would spend about half their time currently on typical and end-user support. But then the other half of the time as a junior network and systems administrator spend their time on our network and systems administration tasks. The idea is to look at potentially offering the opportunity of promotion to two of our current IT support technicians if they express an interest in this opportunity and evaluate them as candidates for that position. But that would open up two positions for promotion. So it would be the addition of those two positions. And then if they promote from within, instead of having two IT support positions that would become vacant, we would have one, but then utilize our relationship with MAVECA, which is our local IT support group, and there's a name for that I'm missing right now, Mike.
ITC.
ITC. And MAVECA is our designated ITC, and we have the ability to purchase services from them and to purchase the needed services that we would have for IT support from MAVECA rather than having a full created position here within the school district. And looking at the analysis of the salary and cost of these moves, it looks to better serve what we do and save the district about $24,000 annually. But it creates an opportunity for growth within the department for members who are currently there by the possibility of promotion into a job that gives them some additional responsibility and time, and it shifts some of the work that we do in our technology department. So those are brought to you today as items of discussion, so if you have any questions about those, either Mike or I can answer that. And then next, our idea would be between now and next month to begin the work on hiring, posting the jobs, hiring for that, and bringing back final recommendations of the job description and the salary schedule, and potentially recommendation of individuals to fill those positions at the next board. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Darren. Okay, so our final item tonight is a very exciting item. This is Audio Enhancement, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tyler Alexander.
Good evening, everyone. Members of the board, Mr. Otten, Mrs. Kitzmiller. This is an exciting presentation for you tonight to discuss our partnership with Audio Enhancement. Audio Enhancement, we've been working with them for many months, and it has been a pleasure to work with some of their reps, Jimmy Bible and Kevin Mitchell, to put this project together. Aging PA systems is what began these discussions. We have aging PA systems in many of our buildings across this district, and as we know, PA systems are crucial to the safety of our children so that we can communicate quickly to both students and staff in the buildings. What I'm going to present to you tonight, not only are we going to get PA systems, but we're going to get many other great features from Audio Enhancement as a part of this project. Another thing that is really exciting about this project is that Audio Enhancement is going to make Beaver Creek City School District a showcase district in this part of the country. We are going to host other school leaders, other districts into our district when this project is complete so that they can see how the features that they will install integrate into our buildings. This project is seven buildings. It's Beaver Creek High School, Ankeny Middle School, Fairbrook Valley, Parkwood, Main, and Shaw Elementarys. Other buildings, the other buildings in the district have updated and newer PA systems. And Coy Middle School, Trebine Elementary School, and the preschool already have classroom audio within the buildings. At the end of this project, the seven buildings will have the following features. They will have high-fidelity classroom sound reinforcement so that every student is in an environment where they can hear the teacher clearly and perform their best. This system integrates with hearing aids and cochlear implants directly. Wireless teacher microphones with safe button built in, teachers can live a better day by being less fatigued, control their classrooms more easily, deliver instruction to all students simultaneously, and rest assured that notifying safety and admin officials is just a button press away. This also sets us up to be compliant with Alyssa's Law in these seven buildings when it passes in Ohio. We will also get the MIKE 360 student microphone. It is an engaging student microphone that can be tossed. It is a round ball, almost like a foam ball, that can be tossed throughout the room, increasing engagement and making it easier. engagement and making it easier for teachers to manage their classroom and student participation. This next feature is amazing. It's called the Clear Connect Translation so that every student has access to instruction in their native language and break down language barriers in the classroom. So, students that are English language learners that will be able to use their Chromebook or other device and receive live translation into their native language when the teacher is speaking. In addition, students who are deaf that are unable to sign are able to receive English translation as a part of this project. And we will receive the state-of-the-art Epic Intercom paging and Bell System that is easy for anyone to use and completely customizable for a K-12 environment, completely evolving campus-wide communications. So, all of those features come with this project, which is pretty amazing. We will be, this project is a part of the Capital Improvement Plan. We have made some adjustments to the capital plan to cover the cost of this. It is all coming out of PI. It will not come out of general fund monies for the district. The total cost for all seven buildings is just under $2.7 million, which is an absolutely amazing price that Audio Enhancement is giving us. And because we are allowing other districts to come in and see this system in live, we have been able to get a great deal from Audio Enhancement, so we can't thank Jimmy and his team enough. This item is a part of the agenda tonight for approval. We would like to get moving on this very quickly. If it is approved tonight, we will begin working with engineers and getting them into buildings within the next month, and we hope to begin installation during the school year because installation will happen at night, and it will not impact the daily learning that is happening every day in our district. And our hope would be by the end of the school year, this system would be in those seven buildings across the district.
This is amazing.
It is.
I don't know what to say.
I've been lucky to work on a lot of really cool projects, and this is one of my favorites.
What a bonus for the kids and our teachers. I mean, what do you say? It's like, and the translation is another language?
Yeah, one of the things I love, I have friends of our family who have two kids that are hearing impaired, and we have ASL translators for them in the classroom, but what happens when that person's sick? And, you know, that just takes away barriers for kids that need that extra help that if, you know, if something breaks down in the plan, we have a way to help them.
The audio makes a big difference with the teacher's, has it on her, because when I taught, I had several kids who had hearing issues, so I was a teacher that had the audio system on me, microphones around the classroom. But it just didn't benefit those kids because if you have your back to a ball, you know, like the board, they can hear everything you're saying. It is a great bonus.
And the fact that it is built in, it's not a system that is just attached to the wall.
Yep.
It is built into our building. It's through our network. One thing I did not mention, as a part of this project, they will send three of, three people from our IT department for training. And so, our folks, if something goes down, will be able to troubleshoot and fix the system, which is another great resource to have in-house, and we don't have to call a technician in from another part of the state or neighboring states.
So, is it a mic? What does the teacher actually wear?
So, it's a lanyard, and at the end of the lanyard, it's kind of an oval-shaped device that has the microphone in it. That lanyard is also where the safety button is, so if a teacher presses that safety button because there's an issue, administration and our security guards and our SROs would be alerted to an exact location of where that teacher is. It's not just that teacher's name. It would alert them to an exact location in the building.
If I could just add, I was able to see this group probably three years ago. I attended a workshop through AASA, and we probably, it was an interesting workshop because you meet with vendors, and they're not trying to sell you anything. They want to learn from you about how they can make their product better. And so, there were probably about seven to 10 vendors there. And when I saw Audio Enhancement, it, you just, you ought to go on and go to their website and just look at their story. Their story is unbelievable about how they got into it. I would encourage everybody to look at Audio Enhancement and their story. But once you start seeing the product and you start understanding the impact, it's really what you said, Joanne, this is really the first, we give a lot of tools. Bobby is so great at giving tools to our teachers and to our staff to make their lives better, but this is the first tool we're actually going to give them that physically makes their life better.
And the kids.
And the kids. And so, and then, when we saw it years ago, or three or four years ago, I was so impressed with it. It's one of the first things I said to Tyler when Tyler came on board is if we ever had that opportunity to build that high school, I want, we wanted Audio Enhancement to be in there. And working with Jimmy and Kevin has just been outstanding. They are just excited for the project. We're excited to partner with them. We think they're one of the best partners we could join, and this is gonna be great for our kids, and it will transform our classrooms. So, I'm very excited about it.
Can you speak a little bit? You mentioned seven buildings. I don't remember if you mentioned which ones, but two things, obviously, that's not all of our buildings. So, was that based on like the building need, the needs of students in various buildings, like populations that had more needs or others, or what? And then, the second question is, would there then be plans to expand this to others, you think? Is that an out-year decision?
So, how we got to those seven buildings was last year, we replaced the PA system in Coy-Trebine. And so, they run off of the same PA system, and there's different codes that they use to make announcements just at Coy, just at Trebine. And so, we replaced that. We also replaced the PA system at Ferguson Hall, and then, the PA system at the preschool center functions the way it should. And so, so those buildings all have updated PAs. Coy and Trebine and the preschool also have classroom audio as a part of those buildings. And so, it's different than what Audio Enhancement brings, and there are features that Audio Enhancement has that those buildings would not have. But these were our focus because we have PAs that are failing at times in these buildings, so we need to address these first. In a perfect world, I would love to move Audio Enhancement into all of our buildings. I think that there are benefits that they bring more than just a PA system and more than just a classroom audio system. And the focus, though, right now is just these seven. We will get those implemented, and I would imagine that we're gonna begin having discussions because I think word's gonna travel fast when those seven buildings have it and it's up and running.
If it's as popular as we think it's gonna be?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a hard-wire system?
It is all, yes. It is all through the network. It is not a wire, the microphone is a wireless microphone in the classroom. It's not, and both the student mic and the teacher mic, but all of our, all the new speakers, all the devices are all tied directly into the network. It's not, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong because Mike was involved in these meetings, but we're not running a bunch of speaker wire. It's all through the network. Is that, that's, yep. Which is why they, we can do it during the school year because they don't mess with our current system. They will install, in addition to our current system, when it's up and running, we can then remove the, our current system from the classrooms.
Okay, so, the microphones that you wear, they Bluetooth?
I, I'm not sure how exactly.
I'm just wondering about range.
They will, inside of a classroom will be no issues.
Like surround sound.
Yeah, it will be no issues, and they can be utilized across different sizes of classrooms. So, I don't know exactly what the range is for the devices, but in all the conversations we've had, there will, there will be, the way it will be set up is each classroom will have their own devices so that those teachers' classrooms function appropriately.
Sure, as someone who's worn a microphone for hearing impaired students, should've been wearing one for myself, but for hearing impaired students, the reason I ask about range is because you could literally go out of your classroom at lunchtime and have a conversation with another teacher, and the student would come back in and say, hey, I know what you said.
I'm sure there will be some training involved.
It's called turning off the.
I was just wondering about that. And as a hearing impaired person, I wear both hearing aids and cochlear implants. It would've been very nice for me, hearing, hearing channel students have to work three or four times harder to keep up just from the communication that goes on in a classroom or in life in general, that it requires a lot more focus. And is this like a loop system that they use in theaters? You know what that is?
No, and I'm not positive.
Not all theaters have them.
Okay.
And I stopped going to movies years ago because I could not. I'd seen Mouse movies, but there's some sort of sounds within what they were. So, but the theaters have installed little feedback through hearing aids or cochlear implants, feeds directly into those. So, it's very, a big improvement. So, I go to theaters where they have those.
I will, I will check because that's an interesting question. I will check with Jimmy, our rep, both on range and the loop system, for sure.
Okay. You know, since I've been hearing challenged since I were about five years old, I know the challenge.
Yeah, absolutely.
Challenge is great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm paying for our kids and teachers. Thank you. That's amazing. Okay, Andrew Financial Reports. I'm gonna need a motion a second to approve the following, the July 2026 financial reports and the permanent appropriations and amended certificate for fiscal year 2026.
So moved?
Discussion.
So, we are only one month into this new fiscal year, so it's too soon yet. I mean, as you look at my financial report, there's an awful lot of blanks in there. So, it's too soon yet to give an analysis of where we are financially. We haven't even ran a payroll yet for the current faculty and staff, and we did have a higher number of resignations and retirements at the end of last year in comparison to other years. So, you know, we haven't ran that yet. We also, we don't have a breakdown yet of the state formula funding for this year as the formula funding was part of the biennial budget. So, and I don't expect that at this point that we'll see what that new funding looks like until about the end of October. I assume in the October number, we get paid twice a year from the, or twice a year, feels like it, twice a month from the state? And so, I assume at this point, we probably won't see it until the second payment of October. It's gonna take them a little while to go all the way through the biennial budget and figure out exactly how the school districts are being funded. That being said, I did, on Monday, we received receipt of the Government Finance Officers Association Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2024. It's a prestigious recognition made possible by our previous receipt of the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our annual comprehensive financial report, which is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Established in 1945, this program challenges state and local governments to exceed minimum generally accepted accounting principles requirements, creating comprehensive financial reports that embody transparency and complete disclosure. The program specifically recognizes governmental entities that demonstrate exceptional commitment to these elevated standards. These dual awards underscore Beaver Creek City Schools' commitment to maintaining the highest standards of financial transparency and accountability. The recognition validates our ongoing efforts to provide clear, comprehensive financial information to stakeholders and demonstrates our dedication to responsible stewardship of public resources entrusted to support student educational outcomes. The district's commitment to prudent financial management while delivering outstanding educational results received additional validation through state-level recognition. That was at the national level. We also, for that same fiscal year, received state-level recognition. For that same fiscal year, the state of Ohio designated our district as only one of 18 districts achieving placement in both the lowest 20% for per pupil expenditure and the top 20% for academic achievement. This remarkable distinction places the Beaver Creek City School District among just 3%, the top 3% of Ohio's 605 school districts, a testament to our strategic approach to maximizing educational impact while maintaining fiscal responsibility. This achievement demonstrates that excellence in education and efficient resource utilization are not competing priorities but complementary objectives that reinforce our mission to serve students in our community effectively.
Congratulations.
It's not something we do by ourselves, and definitely wanna, you know, thank my assistant, Jamie. She's right there by me every single day, and everybody on our team. So, yeah, it was a, it was a, it was a great thing on Monday. It was really cool, so, thank you. And that's it.
Okay.
Mrs. Torgano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
And Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, Andrew, new business items, board action. I'm gonna need a motion a second to approve the following. Employment salary changes, leaves of absence, and terminations for certified board report and classified board report. Cooperative agreement for Coy-Trebine shared use path. Land donation, Shaker Town and Grange Hall. Agreement for educational placement. Approval of audio enhancement contracts, type four reimbursement, and the approval of the 2025-26 handbooks.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a couple of things to cover with the board. First one is number two. We've had a discussion about this in the past. If you are in front of Coy and Trebine, you will see the shared use path is being, is currently under construction there. That is an agreement that we have right now between Beaver Creek City Schools, the Green County Parks, and Beaver Creek Township, so that is moving forward at this point. The other one is land donation. Again, this is just a reminder, that's the corner of Shaker Town and Grange Hall. That property is being utilized for expansion of road there, so we are in full agreement with that because obviously, we see that helping us down the path. And type four reimbursement, that's our typical transportation. And then, the approval of handbooks. I know we have started school already, so we will work to get these handbooks approved by the board before we have kids utilizing those handbooks. We left that off, but there's no, no specific or major changes, just truly being updated from the past year, so that's all I've got.
Okay. Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Torgano?
Yes. And we're, I need member 11. I'm gonna make, I need a motion a second to table the approval of the resolution to join the vouchers heard Ohio until December of 2026, at which time, the board can choose to reopen the discussion or not.
Can I ask, I think what I wanna ask is a point of order, since we don't do Robert's Rules all that often. Would this motion prevent us from taking this up sooner? If somebody introduced a motion to say something changed, maybe in July or whatever, we wanted to reevaluate this, would this motion prevent us from taking this up earlier?
I don't know.
So, my, my understanding, it would not. It would just be a motion to override the motion.
Right.
It wouldn't take anything, it would not.
Nope.
I don't think this motion will supersede.
Right, it would just be another motion.
It would just be another motion.
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, I need a motion a second.
So moved?
Second. Call the roll. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Torgano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we're into announcements. So September 1st, Labor Day, no school, all offices closed. September 6th and 7th is the Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival. September 15th, it's a regular Board of Education meeting at 5:00. Then we have a joint work session with the city of Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township at 6:30, and that's right here.
Correct.
And now we're into board comments. Mrs. Hunt?
Okay, I'll keep it brief, because we've been here a while. Just want to thank the administration for planning opening day. I always enjoy that day. It's, I love going to the new staff breakfast and getting to see the new staff. But opening day is always really well done, and Paul always makes us cry, and I always forget to bring tissues. So I'm going to remember that for next year. I want to congratulate Bobby on her award. I think we tell you this a lot, but hopefully, I'm sure we don't tell you enough. We appreciate everything that you do for our kids and for our staff. A lot of the things that come to you as ideas. I know I work with a lot of people, and I've worked with in the past a lot of people who are idea fairies. They have these great ideas, but then they don't ever do anything with them. So I just appreciate that when you have those ideas and dreams, that you really pursue them for our kids and for our staff. So thank you. In terms of the voucher discussion, I just want to say, like, I appreciate the fact that I'm sitting on a board with people who, we don't always agree. There's lots of decisions we make that we don't always agree. Sometimes we work through a discussion and come to an agreement, but we can walk away from the table and have, and have these discussions and be respectful with one another regardless. And I also appreciate that people from our community come to speak to us and let us know. Just because we may or may not disagree does not mean your opinion isn't valued and isn't heard. So I don't want that to be the perception, at least from my, my perspective. In terms of the RTRI conversation, I appreciate the sharing of the information about that. I know there's been a lot of questions. We get a lot of emails, and it's good for us just to share that information with the community. I know that some of you may or may not be aware, we have kids that have utilized this policy or this law for several years in another faith. And I certainly, you know, I believe that each of us has our right to, to explore whatever faith we believe or none at all. So I just appreciate that we've set some very strict guidelines for that, for, for any opportunity for any faith that would like to do that. And I know that our district is very good about keeping up those guardrails. So I don't believe that we're going to allow things to happen that are unsafe for kids who do not wish to participate. And so, you know, I know we have those things in place, and I appreciate that, so that all people are respected and all their beliefs are respected as well. So again, thank you for the opportunity to have good discussions with people that we don't always agree, but when we walk out, we at least respect one another. So thank you.
Mr. Morrison?
Okay, thank you. Like you said, we've been here a while, so this will be, will be brief. First of all, congratulations to our retirees. Like Darren always says, we accept their retirement with regret, because when we hire somebody, it's our goal that they're going to stay with Beaver Creek schools for the rest of their career. So congratulations to each of them. I'd like to also congratulate Bobby on that well-deserved award and great job. Congratulations to our financial department for our financial reporting award. Great job to everyone on the opening session. Great job with the military family welcome night. Great job with the new staff welcome. The open houses all went well, and our athletic seasons are going well as well. So we're off to a good start.
Okay, Dr. Fisher?
Well, Denny summed up a lot of my points really well. Absolutely, it's been a great night for awards and recognition, so absolutely, I want to echo those congratulations. It's just so great to have such a phenomenal administration that hires such great teachers and works so hard to keep them here until they just decide they're not going to work anymore. And that's, that's great. That's something that I'm proud of. Really shows that we have a phenomenal community. I also want to echo Krista's comment, and I was going to say it, whether or not you said it, I want to thank my board members. Obviously, I didn't get the outcome I wanted here tonight, but we had a respectful conversation, and so much of what we see in politics today is not that. And I really appreciate that we were able to stay focused on the issues. And I want to say, I abso, while I, while I have a different conclusion, I absolutely resonate with all of your core values and the bases from which you drew your decision. And so I walk away here with all the same respect I had for each of you before we walked in. So I'm really pleased that we have such a high-functioning organization across the board. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
For the retirement recognition, of course, school nurses are one of the greatest, strongest links in, in our safety and the health of our students. And they deserve all of the praise that we could possibly heap upon them. Could we say she couldn't retire?
It's bad to do that. They don't like that.
I don't see the agreement, anyway. So for the awards ceremony, or for all the award winners, you know, it's just a sign of excellence that Beaver Creek School has across the board. And all the things that we do at the administrative level, or at the teacher level, are all indicative of improving student outcomes. So that's kind of where we're at. More awards, please, plus boards. So the vouchers, the voucher situation, I mean, it's just gut-wrenching for me, and what I see and the problem with it is, and it's like a problem with a lot of things in our culture, it becomes a matter of mission creep. It started off for kids, didn't end up that way right now. So there's little incremental changes. When people get power to do a certain thing, you know, they're always looking forward to, well, what's the next step? What can I do again to make a different change and use this as my springboard to do that with? So still having issues with that. We're probably leaning toward Mr. Fisher on that, because we've got to stay in the fight somehow. The cost doesn't disappear just because we don't join. They're still fighting to, to make funds to do that with. Let's see. Career Center off to a good start? Did your daughter say we were off to a good start?
She said it was a great start.
Awesome. And, yeah, so again, we're maxed out in students this year, and looking for ways to increase, one, increase our programs, and two, increase our student ability to take those programs. So just like us right now, you know, we're overloaded in students, and we're looking for ways to solve that problem. We are out there as well. You know, culture's kind of changed at this point, and people are very interested in those kinds of jobs that are hands-on jobs, that you don't necessarily need to college education for. And you can make a lot of money when you get out of high school, so, and cut those, and cut those costs. We're looking, of course, at some different things in terms of maybe building or drilling programs to Beaver Creek. So, I mean, all those things are kind of on the books. So we're looking forward to it. It's, again, just like a lot of schools in a lot of places, for us out there, it's not as much a matter of money as it is for us, but it is a matter of space. And so we're working with that. Great start to the year, always good. I'm still crying, got my baseball.
That's good.
Got a bunch of people to sign it already. I still can't figure out how to get into that crystal case.
I'll help you.
Thank you. Getting ready to get out my hammer.
Then I break it. That's a good choice.
Don't do that. Okay. Is that the way it works? Simple?
You slide it, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm okay.
Now, these are usually things I'm good at, all my many years of construction, but I always default to the hammer.
Then you can't put the ball in it.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't go back in as easily or as nicely, so.
Okay.
But other than that, that's it for me.
Okay.
You've upped the good work.
Well, I want to say the one thing about these members of the board, is that while we don't always agree, like, we respect each other, and that says a lot for these people. That's why I love working with them. So thank you all for a great discussion tonight. And while everybody may not be happy, and I don't mean the board members, but the community, the one thing about this board is we're honest, that how we feel. And that, to me, is what's important. So we'll see where this goes. I want to tell you that Laura Kovar, who is our high school English teacher, she received, and I was, it was nice that she invited me, but I was at Sinclair College yesterday, she received the CPC Teacher of the Year Award from Sinclair. That was very special. And it was interesting, sitting there at lunch with all these educators, it was really interesting, listening to these college professors talk. But I have to share this, this is one thing, I said nothing else, this is important. I was sitting there at the table, and we're talking, and one person said, and Lauren said, oh, you're the person that the kids talk about, or you're the person, she said, and this one, actually, these two professors said, you know, when we get Beaver Creek kids, we're like, we're good to go. It's going to be a great year, she said, because our kids are so prepared. And that says a lot for our teachers and this district. That is such a, I sat there, and I was just beaming like, that's Beaver Creek. So, yeah, so to all our teachers, to our administrators, that give them the tools they need, thank you, because this is what makes this district so special. And with that, come to see us at the Popcorn Festival. Band camp was fabulous. Loved being with those kids and serving lunch, they're so much fun. I'm going to tell you, those are the most well-mannered kids that you can deal with. They can through lines, we're serving, thank you, please, thank you, no, thank you, this is great, thank you for your, like, okay. It's like, they're amazing kids. And I said that to Matt Frost, he goes, yeah, yeah, I know, I said, well, it starts with the leadership, and it does. So thank you to the band camps for a fun week. And with that, come see us at the Popcorn Festival, or whatever festivals you go to that weekend. Have a great weekend with that. We'll see you at the next board meeting. And with that, I need a motion a second to go in executive session for the appointment, employment, discipline, or compensation of public employees. Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 and court action, Ohio revised law 121.22G3 pending or in litigation.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Roll call?
Oh, yeah, roll call.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Ragono?
Yes.
Mrs. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just realized that you're.